Good evening and welcome to the September 8th, 2014 meeting of the Florissant City Council. I ask you to rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the free, civil, democratic, one nation, one government, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Before we begin, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to make comment at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would ask that you fill out a speaker card located on the table next to the entrance to the chambers. If you'll hand that to Mr. Hessel seated at my right, he will forward it to my attention. Item number two, roll call. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputo?
Here.
Shildroff?
Here.
Hanky's absent. Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Lee?
Let the record reflect, we have a quorum and Mr. Hanky has been excused from this evening's proceedings. Item number three. Approval of the minutes of the meeting from August 25th, 2014, and August 18th, 2014. Mr. Jones makes a motion to approve both sets of minutes, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. Hearing from citizens. Again, please be advised that this is not a question and answer session. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council for three minutes on any topic they choose. Kevin O'Donnell. Good evening, Mr. O'Donnell. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. I'm here this evening. At the work session, there was a discussion of hiring five additional employees for building inspectors and possibly one civil engineer. And it's not so much the civil engineers, but for the other inspectors. Right now, I thought we had, I know that we were short on inspectors, but when, about three years ago, it was decided that it would be a good idea to get iPads, purchase software for the Public Works Department, Health Department, so it could streamline things. And I believe they were going to hire a part-time secretary or something. But anyway, I was just wondering, I don't understand, I know this isn't a question and answer session, even though it's not mentioned that in the city charter, but I'd like to know why we're hiring more people and we're going to have to buy new iPads for them maybe, improve, update the software. And another thing, I've noticed that every one of you this evening, except for one councilman came into this evening with a Manila folder or an envelope. And I assume that that is the packets for the city council. The packets that were supposed to be transferred over to an iPad system so we could save on paper the expenses to expedite the getting the packets out instead of having employees, city employees drive around and drop them off at the councilor's houses. So I was just wondering why we're still doing the paper, if we still have the iPads. And my final question is, we're having this meeting on September 18th and 25th, which I think is a good idea. But I know this isn't a question and answer session, but I'd like a response to this. Is this going to be a question and answer session where people fill out cards like in the past when we had Mayor Lowry and we filled out the little cards and passed them, turned them in, and then they answered these questions? Or is it going to be like a secret question thing where this is just what I saw at the last two shops or the workshops over there at Egan Center? Okay? And that's all, that's the only questions I have, and I'd appreciate an answer on that, please. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Seeing no other speaker cards, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Communications. No communications this evening. Item number six, public hearings. Public hearing 14-09-021.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 R.C. on Monday, September 8th, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Jack-in-the-Box Restaurant to amend special use permit number 2027 as amended by ordinance numbers 2689, 3616, and 4045 to allow for the remodeling in the B3 zoning district for the property located at 4595 Washington. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone of special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Thank you, clerk. I would assume you're the petitioner, and if so, if you'll please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Shea, S-H-E-A, and my address is 2725 Sutton Boulevard.
Very good. Proceed with your presentation, sir.
We presented in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission back in July 25th for a proposed addition of 298 square feet to an existing Jack-in-the-Box Restaurant that is 2,100 square feet. And as you see on your packets, which I apologize, we're late in delivery, the building addition is on the northeast side of the building. And will house additional storage because the building is really lacking storage within the building. We are not proposing to enlarge the dining room, but we are proposing to just add on to add additional storage.
Sir, could you turn the overhead on? Would that be helpful if you use the overhead?
I could.
Sure.
So, up there on top?
It might help you explain it a little bit easier.
Right.
Unfortunately, I only have elevations to put on that overhead, so I don't have a site plan. I apologize. But it is in your packets. What I'd like to say also is, we are proposing to reimage the exterior of the building, remove the mantered roof screen and replace it with an EIFS roof screen, and I can show you what the elevations would look like. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so before you is a site plan that shows the existing site at Washington and Dunn Road, and the existing building is, contains a drive-through, which is why we need amendment to the conditional use permit. The shaded area to the northeast there is the proposed building addition of 298 square feet. We don't propose any changes in the drive-through lanes or the parking. There is adequate room in the rear of the building to enlarge without doing that. And any questions on the site plan? Thank you. Okay, this is a floor plan of the building. As you can see, the building addition is on the rear here of approximately 298 square feet, and it will house additional storage and a new walk-in freezer because they're lacking storage within the existing building. Any questions on that? And then in terms of the appearance of the building, what you see here is a reimage of the Jack-in-the-Box Restaurant. You'll notice around town that the Jack-in-the-Box brand has plans to upgrade all their restaurants to their kind of new image and standard. And the existing mantered roof that you most likely have seen on that building will be removed, and we will straighten out those roof screens and add new signage and a new color scheme. I will note that the brick below the fascia band will remain as is in accordance with, you know, local statutes. Any questions on those elevations? Okay, and these are elevations of the side of the building and the rear of the building at the top, and the right side elevation of the building on the bottom there. Any questions?
Mr. Jones?
A moment ago, you spoke of all the Jack-in-the-Box getting to rehab.
That's the corporate plan, yes, sir. The ones, I can't speak for all the above, but I can speak for the folks who own this franchise and several other. This would be the fourth one in the area to be renovated and upgraded? Yes, I do not know about the plans for that one yet. I apologize. Any other questions?
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Your building currently right now is painted brick, correct? Isn't the brick that's on the building painted?
I believe it's unpainted brick, and we're not proposing to paint the bricks, sir.
For some reason, I was thinking it was painted brick.
The existing brick will remain.
Okay, that's, then, never mind.
Okay.
Will there be any reconfiguration of the drive-through with the speaker placement?
No, sir.
And will the hours of operation remain as they are?
That's correct.
Anything else to tell us?
No, sir.
I see no other questions from the council. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this public hearing regarding this issue? Please step forward. And if you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. My question isn't really with Jack-in-the-Box, but are the restrooms going to be the same?
No change to the spoken restrooms.
Okay, okay, because I looked at the plans over the weekend, and then when I tried to look at them just now online, I'm coming up with July 28th agenda with 2,200, 2,300 views, and I was wondering what happened. That's my question. It's just not here. The drawings and everything that were here over the weekend are gone from the website. September 8th is actually July 28th agenda.
Are you speaking, what are you talking about, Kevin?
Pardon me?
I don't understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is that I'm on this, it says September 28th, 2014, City Council Meeting Agenda, September 8th. When I enter September 8th, it downloads, and then when I go to open it, it's July 28th. And I don't know if it's...
So you're saying this is an issue with our website?
Well, I'm not complaining about the website. I'm just saying I was trying to look at the drawing, okay? Because I can't see the pictures from back here real well, so I was just going to follow along with the drawings, that's all.
All right.
Because they're on there. So I just thought I'd mention that, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Last staff to look into that issue. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment before we close this public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Schmidt moves to close the hearing, seconded by Mr. Caputo. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, sir. Public hearing 14-09-023.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 R.C. on Monday, September 8th, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition. To authorize a special use permit to Joseph Doyle, DBA specialty trim, to allow for the operation of a vehicle window tinting business for the property located 1195 Lafayette. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone of special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Good evening, sir. I'm assuming you are the petitioner?
Yes.
If you'll state your name and your address for the record, please.
Joseph Doyle, 1365 Navajo Lane.
Very good. You may proceed.
Looking for approval for a special use permit for 1195 North Lafayette Street for automobile window tinting.
And you want to tell us a little bit about your business and how, are you currently operating a business there now, sir?
I'm currently operating a business with a special use permit in the front of the building with a Lindbergh address, and I'm considering moving to the rear of the building, which has a Lafayette address, which means I have to reapply.
The same property, however, correct? Or same contiguous?
Same physical building, yes.
Very good. Mr. Schmidt?
Oh, thanks. That's all I was going to do, was help clarify it. It was just, it's a weird configuration of a building. It's the same building, has two bays up front and a bay in the back, and the bay in the back, and I guess the little office area back there has a different address as opposed to the building, or the two bays that are up front. So, yeah, it's, in essence, the same business, just being able to operate in all three bays instead of just the two bays right now.
Yes.
Perfect. Thanks.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I've been down to the business several times, and I always thought he did a great job. He plies, keeps the place clean, and I think he does a very good job, and I'm glad you're not moving outside of our city, Joe. I look forward to doing business with you in the future if I need my windows tinted.
Thanks.
It's nice to come in a clean place with good business, and like I said, we need to reach out to more of you small businesses to make sure you don't leave our city. So, my hat's off to you, buddies.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Shildroff?
Joe, how you doing?
Good.
Are you responsible for the flowers out front? Do you do that?
Yes, I do.
I just want to tell you thanks because it looks really nice. Really, really good. Thank you.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this issue? Seeing none, Mr. Shildroff moves to close the public hearing, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing is closed. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Second readings. 9023. I will make a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? Clerk, please read the bill. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $1,500 from account number 5062300 postage and printing to account number 50632002300. Office supplies for additional printer supplies for the golf course.
Mr. Caputo will move for a third reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing transfer of $1,500 from account number 5062300 postage and printing to account number 5063200. Office supplies for additional printer supplies for the golf course.
Before a final vote is taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky, Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Bill number 9023 passes and becomes ordinance 8071, 8071. Bill 9026. Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion?
All in favor of second reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance amending Section 505-060 International Plumbing Code of the Municipal Code of Florissant by deleting subsection B6, section 605 Materials, Joints, and Connections to allow for the use of plastic water supply piping.
Ms. Pagano makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance amending Section 505-060 International Plumbing Code of the Municipal Code of Florissant by deleting section B6, section 605 Materials, Joints, and Connections to allow for the use of plastic water supply piping.
Before a final vote is taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez? Lee?
Bill number 9026 passes and becomes ordinance 8072, 8072. Next item on the agenda, new business. Board appointments. Your honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reappoint Don Coleman and Robert Dale Devine to the Veterans Commission.
Mr. Hernandez makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Caputo. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And I'd like to appoint the following individual to the Disability Awareness Commission, Andrea Purnell of 4015 Woodcrest.
Mr. Shildroff makes that motion, seconded by myself. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Seeing no additional board appointments, we'll move on to request. Request in Ward 5. Request for an animal permit to keep four hens for Matthew and Maria Byers located at 1535 Beta Drive. The Health Department has recommended approval. Mr. Shildroff makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Caputo. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Shildroff? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I went by the Byers' house on Saturday and looked at the facility, and it looks, it'll be fine, and neighbors don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Very good. We'll go with all in favor again. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Our second request is a request for a full package liquor license for Jimmy L. Brown doing business at Cut Rate Enterprises LLC located at 2164, 6264 North Waterford. Mr. Hernandez?
Motion to approve the liquor request, and everything seems to be in order and in good position, so I request approval.
Mr. Hernandez has made a motion to approve this, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Pardon me. Roll call vote on liquor license. Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
That request is approved. Next item on the agenda, new business. Bills for first reading. Bill number 9027.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 2027 as amended to allow for the remodeling of the property located at 4595 Washington.
Bill 9028.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Joseph Doyle, DBA specialty trim, to allow for the operation of a vehicle window tinting business for the property located 1195 Lafayette.
Ms. Pagano? Ms. Pagano moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Joseph Doyle, DBA specialty trim, to allow for the operation of a vehicle window tinting business for the property located 1195 Lafayette.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Joseph Doyle, DBA specialty trim, to allow for the operation of a vehicle window tinting business for the property located 1195 Lafayette.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to take the opportunity to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Jones? Egan?
Yes.
Caputo?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bill number 9028 passes and becomes ordinance 8073, 8073. Bill 9029.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $325,000 from the Park Improvement Fund to account number 0961 Capital Editions for the replacement of ball field lights and light poles for Field Number 1 and Number 2 in St. Ferdinand Park.
Next item on the agenda, council announcements. Mr. Jones?
Well, I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank everybody. I know the heat wave is about over. I appreciate everybody looking out for the elderly and the pets, cats and dogs that were left outside. People make better stuff to make sure they got indoors. Heat is a pretty bad thing to deal with, and it'll haunt you for life.
Thank you. Mr. Shildroff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to let everybody know that on Saturday, September 13th, at Northwest Healthcare on Graham Road is celebrating their 10-year anniversary. They will have an event from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They will offer free health screenings, food, games, and entertainment. I encourage everyone to go by there, and I thank former Mayor Lowry for leading the charge to keep that emergency room open on Graham Road when they wanted to close it several years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, September is National Preparedment Month, so I have some pamphlets that are handouts that has like a little kit you can put together for survival gear, you know, water and other safety items, first aid kits, and other items. I'll put them up there right after the meeting. If anybody wants to grab them, they're very good information in here, and every once will keep it with you, and then update your kits every once in a while and be prepared for an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Hi, just want to say New Life Baptist Church on Shackelford Road will be having a free eye clinic this Saturday, September 13th, from 10:00 till 2:00. There is no charge for free eye exam. First come, first served. Have to be 15 years or older. Again, that's New Life Baptist Church, 1185 Shackelford at Malampee, and that'll be this Saturday from 10:00 till 2:00. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a couple items. Number one, September 29th will be the annual Florissant Police Welfare Association Golf
Number one, September 29th will be the annual Florissant Police Welfare Association Golf Tournament held at the Golf Club of Florissant. If you're interested in getting a Florissant in, or if you're a business owner who would like to donate or be a whole sponsor, donate supplies or prizes, contact Captain Bowden at the Police Department. And October 25th, October 25th will be the very first inaugural Race to the Shrine held through Old Town Florissant with a 5K walk-run step-off at 4:00 PM. If you're interested, go to racetoshrine.com. And I've just been handed this newsflash. Okay, well, I got yours. All right. That's all I have. Your Honor, the Florist here is what we haven't stolen.
Thank you, Mr. President. One last thing to announce. We had a very prestigious visit on August 26th from Archbishop Jordan of Reims, France. He was in St. Louis to help commemorate the 250-year anniversary of St. Louis. And he is from, Reims is where the kings used to be crowned. And he's also a relative of St. Philippine de Chen, so he wanted to visit the St. Ferdinand Shrine, where she had a lot of her work. And they had a, just, they didn't have a mass, but they had a celebration of the sacrament, and they used the same monstrance, which is a kind of an ornate sacramental thing that the Catholic Church uses. It's the same one that was used when St. Philippine worshipped at the chapel in the St. Ferdinand Shrine. So that's kind of a special moment. And Father, Archbishop Jordan addressed the audience in French, which was interesting to hear, and he had an interpreter. We honored the Bowling Hall of Fame member, Dick Weber, his son, who's also in the Bowling Hall of Fame. Pete Weber was on hand, along with his mother, Juanita, and most of the members of the Weber family. And friends from around the bowling community in Florissant were on hand to honor Dick Weber in the Walk of Fame on September 2nd. And then we're also going to honor the second female in our Walk of Fame, Charlotte Ballard. The only other female in our Walk of Fame currently is St. Philippine. And Charlotte was the owner of Ballard Plumbing after her husband passed away, and she became the first woman in Missouri to hold a master plumber's license. But important to us is that she's a charter member of some of the organizations, Florissant Valley Historical Society, Old Town Partners. She was president of Florissant Valley Shelter Workshop, a founding member of Friends of Old St. Ferdinand, Sister Optimists team. And no matter how busy, she always made time to help others. And so her example of community service will always inspire us. That's going to be on September 24th, right, right before the Wednesday night out at Handel's. We'll have a ceremony right across the street from Clix Heating and Cooling at the intersection of St. Ferdinand and St. Francis Street, and that's where the Ballard Plumbing Company used to be. This coming Thursday, we have our September 11th, 9/11 ceremony. It's going to be at the VFW. This has been very well attended for the last 13 years, or 12 years. Expect to have a lot of veterans and emergency responders on hand. I'd like to invite just members of the community to come and pay respects to those emergency responders that will be there, the veterans that will be there. Some active-duty members of the military might be there. It's just kind of a solemn opportunity for us to reflect on the sacrifices that those in uniform make for us every day and that we can, we have to always be vigilant. And that's the lesson to learn from September 11th, December 7th, or any other profound day where we're caught by a foe. We're going to have a public hearing in Florissant City Hall, also on September 11th. It's going to be at 7:00 PM. The Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing will be at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. On Saturday, there'll be a jobs fair at Florissant Valley Community College, sponsored by the Urban League. And this is going to be, it's going to have a section or a seminar on resume writing, dress for success, college fair, home buying information, and things of that nature. So that's for all residents from our vicinity up at the Junior College on Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we're going to have a senior town hall meeting on September 18th at 9:00 AM. And that evening, we'll have a community forum at the Egan Center for the, we're going to have East Side, West Side. That'll be the East Side Forum for Wards 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. And then we'll have the following week, on the 25th, at 7:00 PM at JFK Community Center, we'll have a similar presentation at 7:00 PM for Wards 1, 2, 3, and 4. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be on September 22nd, 2014, at 7:30 PM. Mr. Schmidt moves to go in adjournment and is seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The council will stand adjourned.